Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out to tonight's action meeting. First, we're going to start off, I believe we have a video tonight, right? Okay.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I am Melina Colarco. Last week before their monthly work session, the North Penn School Board toured the bowels of North Penn High School to see the renovation needs firsthand. During their work session, the Board discussed the updates the nearly 50-year-old facility needs. The NPHS renovations discussion, as well as those of other district facilities, will continue at the Monthly Support Services Committee meetings. Check nPenn.org for dates and times. Congratulations to two more deserving Superintendent Honor Roll Award winners. Dr. Dietrich and his cabinet surprised not one but two staff members at Hatfield before winter break. Principal Deanna Waters and her head custodian Christina Hazard. Each thought the other was receiving the honor, however, they both were. Dr. Dietrich has one more award to hand out for the year. Is it you?
You're going to Nebraska.
Congratulations to the North Penn High School Theater Department. Their production of "A Midsummer Night's Dream" has been selected to perform at the International Thespian Conference this summer. The troupe will travel to Nebraska in July for this honor. The North Penn High School Unified Bachi Team is looking to defend their state title. They geared up for this year's competition with a friendly scrimmage against staff members. The match gave the athletes the opportunity to fine-tune their bachi skills before head-to-head competition begins. The world-famous Harlem Wizards are once again facing off against the North Penn Dream Team in a friendly game of basketball. Join in on the fun on Saturday, January 26th, at 7:00 PM at North Penn High School. Tickets are just $12 and are on sale now at nPenn.org. The Wizards game is a fundraiser for the NPHS girls athletic teams. And finally, January is School Board Appreciation Month, and we just wanted to say...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all that each of you do for the students of North Penn. Thank you for your time in making North Penn the best for each and every student and staff member. That's it for this edition of North Penn News. I'm Melina Colarco. Have a great day.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I would like to announce that the Board and Administration met an executive session this evening from 6:15 PM to 7:30 to discuss matters of personnel. Moving on tonight, we are having proclamations for the North Penn High School marching nights. So...
You're going to come in that door over there and circle around?
Right.
Good?
Mr. Heller, good evening.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to just take a brief moment and, before we even get to the moment of recognizing this state championship, I just want to make sure that you understand the path that they took to get there. I want you to understand the ups and the downs and the joys that we experienced throughout the season. First of all, throughout this season, not only did we win this championship, but we focused on our grades because we stick to the academic eligibility. And usually, in the past several years, 60% of the organization has achieved honor roll status during the fall season. They also learned that when you walk in the band room, you take your hat off because it's the right thing to do. They also learned that the band director does not tolerate profanity. And they learned that it's important to carry yourself with dignity and pride. They also learned that when we took a trip to Boston, they maybe learned a little bit of the history of the town. They learned the traffic pattern from Philadelphia to Boston. When it says maybe five and a half to six hours, takes maybe eight, maybe nine hours. They learned the traffic patterns. They learned how to do time management. They learned how to jam four people in a room in Boston and make sure they space out enough shower time. They also recognize, as much as they want to trust the band director and follow my leadership, that sometimes reading the radar is not my strength. And even when I say it's going to be a great, warm, sunny afternoon, it's going to rain anyway.
What's that look like?
That's your call. They learn the importance of the parents and the volunteers, especially the music aids. Present, Mrs. Hammond and Mrs. Logan. And every aspect of what these parents do. And between putting props together, if you didn't see our show, we had massive pieces of masses of wheat out there, anywhere from eight, 10 to 12 feet. And they were built by hand, and they were carted by hand and unloaded by hand. They raised the money. They fed these kids. They understand the importance of the parents and volunteering through down the road. They will be good, they will be stronger parents, and they will become better citizens. They also understand the importance of pace themselves and energy-wise, because we rehearse Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. We're going to rehearse after school on Friday, have a quick dinner break, of course, being fed by the music aids. And then we sit there and we cheer on our award-winning football team. And we go at all their games. And then they know that they have to get to bed, because I give them a curfew all the time, that they have to follow, because the next day, I take them for another 12 hours, where we're going to usually rehearse for five hours at dinner break. We're going to travel to the location of the competition, and we do all this rehearsal, hundreds of hours of rehearsal, to perfect eight minutes' worth of a show. There is nothing like high school marching band. And you're about to meet some of the finest students of North Penn High School tonight. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for bearing with me, but would you please allow me to present some of the finest students of North Penn High School. Nicole Albright. Nala Ashanti. Devon Baldwin. Benjamin Barron. Colin Bates. Luke Bidding. Emmy Blanchard. Lauren Bland. James Carnal. Carolyn Cherian. Maddie Cullen. Folks, several of these people are dressed formally. We are trying to rush them to the high school concert. Of course, there's a concert tonight as well. Ally Curran. Ashley Curry. Jeffrey DeJesus. Yoni Demis. Dan Deal. Blake Durkis. Drum Major Jillian Durkin. Kelly Dwyer. Kay Lou Faya. Maureen Farrell. Evan Garbaccio. Justice Girth. Annabelle Gettr. Matt Gomes. Alex Hammond. Ben Heck. Alexandra Hershey. Michael Horvath. Harrison Jaffe. Michael Johansson. Cameron Joyce. Nikki Jashinchen. Zach Karf. Katherine Killian. Jason Cosman. Kat with a C. Cavallik. Band President Julie Kratz. Se Young Lee. Thomas Lloyd. Joe Logan. Carly Lowe. Kaitlyn Lupinacci. Marie Medoff. Sally Myers. Lizzie Mueller. Michaela New. Rebecca Nieber. Drum Major Cole Overton. Josh Platt. Thomas Pyle. Hannah Reding-Gersinsky. David Riley. Grace Riley. Hannah Rothman. Gwyneth Schaefer. Marishush. Katherine Snyder. Connor Spence. Erica Stevens. Katherine Stevens. Megan Stoller. Mackenzie Sutton. Zach Taylor. Abby Thornton. Lexi Ulrich. Emily Ulrich. Giorgio Vidarlis. Zach Vinitski. Band Fund President Alyssa Waldman. Jacob Walker. Erin Waltrick. Carissa Went. Chris Winter.
Mr. Heller, would you like to come through as well?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, sorry it took so long, but to me, it was important to make sure we honor each and every one of these this year. They're unique individuals, and I want to make sure they get the recognition they deserve. So, thank you, and I'm sorry it took so long. Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming out. The kids did a great job. I went to every football game, so I did see every band performance, and I can attest, they did awesome. Thank you for your patience while we switch around here.
So, this is School Director Recognition Month, and quality education is key to opening the doors of opportunity for many students. And providing that education takes a team of committed people, namely, teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, and, very importantly, school board members. And the nine members of the North Penn School Board are an important part of this team, making informed decisions that direct the course of our public schools. And every January, we do take time to celebrate and recognize the challenging and vital work that school board members do on behalf of our students, families, and communities. And school directors do volunteer. Once that came out, an average of 10 hours per month on their board work, sometimes more than that, which does help as we adopt policy, we vote on budgets, we approve curriculum changes, textbooks, we review hiring decisions, just to name a few. And they do take time to learn about these issues that affect public education, and they seek to be innovative in the solutions. They are unpaid. They're locally elected officials. They're invested in their communities, and they're our neighbors, our friends, and they are our local leaders. And during this month of recognition, I do ask that we please take a moment and show gratitude for our school directors' time, dedication, and effort. The job they do is necessary to ensure our schools remain a pathway to a promising future. And we thank them for advocating on behalf of our collective interest, and, most importantly, for making the success of our children their priority. So, could please join me in thanking our school board members.
Thank you very much for that. It's very nice.
We do, we have prepared a little certificate here to honor each of our board members. So, Tina Stoll, our Board President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Fusco, our Board Vice President. Yes, thank you. Ed Diazio, go around and have the whole board and the entire, yeah, okay. Alicia? Alicia D? Alicia? I kind of like that idea, too. Jonathan Casa? Get that over there. And Tim McBain. Jenna Ott. Terry Prokowski. Julianne Rahmich. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate all your service and your commitment.
Thank you very much. Couldn't do it without all your help, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on now, then, we have Audience of Citizens.
Good evening. I'd sign the, sign this document here, but unfortunately, they were remiss, and there is no pen here. So, we can do that later. I don't want to, you know, I want to get on with the program. Nothing is dreary as getting a pen. My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, and I've had, I've lived here like 28 years in Montgomery Township. Fantastic place to live. Okay, what I want to talk about, and I have many topics, but I've learned, I have to hone that since I only get 180 seconds, or three minutes. Oh, thank you. And I would like to talk about the topic of, we have many topics, and we have great expenditures. I wanted to make a comment about that meeting that we had over at the cafeteria. There were actually about 13 people out of 91,000 residents that showed up for that. So, you would never know that by the little spotlight that they had. So, there was like the 13 people, okay? And they went through there and everything, and I gathered there was about $400 million worth of expenditures. You know, people who spend money always have this endless list of stuff, but they have the restraints of, well, what can we really do? Well, that's, that's, that's to be decided later on. I wanted to talk about the bus situation, the transportation situation. I'll tell the public, I don't want to illuminate them. North Penn School, under the guidance of six mechanics that are pulling rabbits out of a hat, these guys are magicians, really, honestly. They have old, broken-down buses. They have many, many, 20 buses with over 200,000 miles on it. And a little due diligence said, oh, yes, we're going to buy 10 buses. We're going to have, oh, better hurry up. We have, we have expenditures. Are they going to provide, provide a grant? We're going to have propane buses? Well, I'll tell you what. If we bought 10 buses, and we did that every other year, it would take about 14 years to replace the buses. I don't think you'll make it. One of the highest priorities that we're going to have to do is buy new buses. Now, we have the kind of buses we're going to buy. I don't want to buy Thomas buses. They're made by Daimler. I don't want to help the Germans out. I want to help out Bluebird. They have an outstanding record of reliability. And all the mechanics said, boy, you really need to buy these buses. They cost a little bit more money, and I don't like to spend money. But you know what? When I'm buying American, I'll pay a little bit more money to help those people down in Georgia. So, and I kind of wonder sometimes, I see the buses going by, wow, that bright yellow? It's orange now. How old is that buses? I don't know how to keep them rolling. And if you want to have all these changes in transportation, things that are going to be needed for transportation, I don't know how you're going to do it when the buses on the, on the tail end of a tow truck. So, this is what I want you to keep. That is one of the main things, logistical support for the student body and getting around. And I yield back three minutes, three seconds of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you for the pen. My name's Danielle Blanchard. I live at 301 Shearer Street, North Wells. And I just wanted to make a comment today, and I didn't get a chance to talk to our principal today of a situation with my child with the technology today during the exams. I have an A student, actually. You all sat and shook her hand. She's very diligent, straight A's all through, very proud mom, but studied really hard for her German test. And because her exam was on the Chromebook, the Chromebook would not load for her. And so, her grade ended up being from straight A's to a C today. So, this was a concern. I know it was brought many times to the Board about the technology that our bandwidth, the Chromebooks would not be able to sustain what we have with the amount of student bodies for exams. Just bringing it to your attention, since it happened today, again, I didn't get to speak to Mr. Galante about it or to the teacher. Figured I was here, so I'd bring it to the school board. Just that this is a concern. And it, our worst, my worst fears did happen, that the computers did not work for the exams today. So, just kind of wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blanchard. Is there anyone else I would like to make public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes from December 13th, 2018 action meeting, and approval of the minutes from the January 8th, 2019 work session. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Rahmich, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on then to committee reports. We are, all right, the Personnel Committee. Personnel Committee of the Board met an executive session before this evening's meeting from 5:30 to 6:30 PM to discuss prospective employees and the hiring of staff for new kindergarten positions in conjunction with the implementation of full-day kindergarten. Finance Committee. Mr. Diazio is not here this evening, so I will just read that. There was no Finance Committee meeting in December. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 12th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the ESC. Also, there will be a special Finance Committee meeting held on Monday, February 4th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the ESC. Moving on then to Safe Schools. Mr. Casa.
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee did not meet in December. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, at 6:00 o'clock here at the ESC. And I would just like to note that we're going to have an overview as to what's been accomplished in the past year, as well as exploring options for the year going forward. So, this will be a good meeting if anyone's interested in attending or watching.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Casa? The next meeting is January 22nd. All right, moving on then to Education, Community, and Policy. Mr. Fusco.
Thank you. The Education, Community, Policy Committee did not meet in December 2018. In January, the committee will hold a meeting on January 22nd, 2019, at 6:30 PM at the ESC in the same spirit. We will be looking at social-emotional programming for the full-day kindergarten program. We'll have a review of the positive behavior intervention supports amongst some other topics. Those are the two big ones that we're hitting on. So, again, that'll be January 22nd here at 6:30. End of report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fusco? Seeing none, move on to Support Services. Mr. Casa.
The Support Services Committee did not meet in December. The next Support Services Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 28th, 2019, at 6:00 PM here at the ESC, repeating the same goal as Safe Schools. We'll be recapping what has been accomplished in the past year, as well as exploring options moving forward for the next year. So, anyone who's able to attend that, there should be plenty to discuss. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Casa? Seeing none, we'll move on then to the North Monco Technical Career Center.
North Monco Technical Career Center, JOC, met in December immediately following the annual holiday dinner. Wonderful dinner put on by our culinary students. We all had a great time, everyone that was able to attend. The meeting was used to discuss some personnel items and a few reorganization items. Mr. Diazio's term has come to an end with the JOC, and Julianne Rahmich here has taken his place and joined the Board, so we're excited to have her. I think that's about it. End of report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Ott? All right, moving then on to Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Rahmich.
The MCIU Board also did not meet in the month of December. The next meeting is scheduled for January 23rd.
Great. End of report. Thank you very much. North Penn Educational Foundation, Ms. Ott.
The Educational Foundation has not met since our last school board meeting. Foundation's next meeting is Wednesday, February 6th, at 7:45 AM here in the ESC. End of report.
Thank you. Okay, then, I guess moving on to the Superintendent's Report, please.
Thank you. I recommend that the Board of School Directors authorize the Administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as independent financial advisor, and Cagle, Kellen, Almey and Lord LLP as bond counsel, and Sweet, Stevens, and Katzen Williams LLP, the school district solicitor, to proceed with the issuance of general obligation bonds, series of 2019, pending acceptable market conditions, in the approximate amount of $10 million via competitive internet auction, the proceeds of which will be used towards the funding of various capital projects of the school district, including Nap Elementary School.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. Prokowski and seconded by Mr. Casa.
We do have a presentation briefly from Wes Hall from PFM.
Okay.
And we can talk a little more detail about this parameter's resolution and pending acceptable market conditions.
Thank you. I'm Wes Hall with PFM Financial Advisors. I'll start off asking, does anyone need a hard copy of the presentation? All on the computer? All right, great. Well, it's just a couple months ago, I was here under similar circumstances to discuss the adoption of the parameter's resolution for the 2018 bond financing. Happy to report, as all of you know, that that pricing went very well and settled in early December. Just began financing the district's capital needs and capital projects. So, here again tonight to discuss the parameter's resolution for the 2019 financing. So, moving to page one, the interest rate chart. Now, this reflects the municipal market data interest yield curve. And so, what you can see with the top chart is you can see the interest rates on the x-axis going from years one to years 30. And this is showing the range of interest rates over the past 20 years. So, what that gray bar is showing is showing the minimum and maximum over 20 years for each, each year. The red line shows the 20-year historic average, and then that blue line shows where rates are currently at. One thing I want to point out about that line is the current yield curve is very flat. And so, what that means is the spread or the difference between the short-term rates and the long-term rates are very small. That works in the district's benefit when you're considering issuing new money, just because you're able to lock in those long-term interest rates at a favorable rate, and then turn around and invest those proceeds at, again, a favorable rate. So... So, that works out well. And then with the bottom chart, what this shows is the 10-year interest rate over the past 20 years. I want to draw your attention all the way to the far right, where you see that sharp decline. Over the past couple of months, we have seen yields decline pretty steadily. They're about, they dropped about half percent over the past couple of months. Mainly, you know, there are a variety of factors. The government shutdown, Brexit uncertainty, trade war with China. Basically, any uncertainty internationally or domestically works in the district's favor for borrowing, for new money and refundings. Investor, we call this for investors, the flight to quality just because investors go and take their money out of riskier assets and put it into safer assets such as US Treasuries or municipal bonds. And North Penn's bonds are certainly considered in the very safe bond category. So, we've, basically to recap, we've seen a significant drop in rates recently.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure. Is that a graph? Can we have this document on the screen? Or? And if not, I just wanted to make sure that for the public and anyone watching, they can access these documents through our portal, correct? Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no problem at all. If you have any questions along the way, feel free to let me know here. So, going on to page two, the discussion points page. Just to recap with number one, we did the initial borrowing in 2018, and that resulted in a deposit to the district's construction fund of just under 9.9 million. Initially, for 2019, we were anticipating going out into the market later on this year in the fall. But after conversations with the administration and really spurred on by the interest rate movement and the favorable market conditions, we are looking into expediting that pricing into potentially late January as long as the market conditions remain, continue to remain favorable to the district.
Is it the potential to be even more favorable than the borrowing we did in December?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
So, interest rates move every day. We don't know where they're going, but, you know, looking to see where they are and where they've gone over the past couple of months, it is a favorable time to consider entering into the market. So, that's why we're here tonight, just to discuss the adoption of the parameters resolution. And then another step might be occurring in 2020, but there, more information on that later. Just a recap of what a parameters resolution is. And what it does is it allows the financing team to price the bonds on a date other than a school board meeting. So, we get more flexibility in when we can price the bonds. We can attempt to time it to more favorable market conditions instead of just being locked in on one day or two days a month. And how it does that is it establishes parameters or boundaries that the ultimate financing has to fall within. We're going to set a maximum principal amount. So, that's the overall size has to be within $10 million in this case. Maximum final maturity, which is March 1, 2034. A maximum principal amount per annual maturity. I'll be talking about that in just a minute here. And then the maximum interest rate, so 5%. And that doesn't mean we're going to go ahead and issue $10 million of bonds at 5%. We're still going to basically fit it in at the most favorable interest rate to the district. And then ultimately, to price the bonds, we would need approval from the administration or the president or vice president, as shown in number six. So, moving to the financing timeline, this is the fastest that we would be able to price the bonds. Certainly, you can slow down the process, and if, you know, the market moves away from us, we can, you can delay it, you know, really indefinitely. So, today, adopt the parameters resolution. Wednesday, January 30th, would be pricing bonds via competitive sale. This is the same way that we did it for the last deal, eBay-style auction online, and it worked out very well for the district. And then the settlement, we would be anticipating March 6th. And that's when the proceeds would be available to the district and deposited in your construction fund. So, moving on to page three. This just shows what an estimate of this bond issue might look like, given current market rates. I just wanted to note, these are not locked-in rates. This is just an estimate based off current market conditions. But the rates would be locked in if there was a sale on January 30th. So, these are just estimates. Again, final maturity, March 1, 2034. The structure of this deal would be a wraparound structure, the exact same as the last deal we did, where we would basically put the principal in 2028 and onward, where the district's existing debt drops off. And similar to the last deal, because this would be under $10 million, it would have a five-year call feature. So, after five years, you could redeem the bonds.
Wes, are you ready for questions on that now, or would you prefer?
Yeah, whenever, really, whenever you guys.
So, you're showing a projected schedule there with principal repayments. And you mentioned there in 2028, when the present debt, you know, falls off, that sort of thing.
That's right.
Considering that, how tightly are we tied into this as a parameter in terms of that principal repayment schedule based off of this document that we're looking at?
It would be similar to this.
How tightly are we tied to that? Because it's very important to me that we look at a long-term plan. We had more recent discussions since you've been here last time. And I've been talking about the need to have you take a look at, you know, a long-term financing that could include some renovations at the high school.
Okay.
We're considering a ninth-grade relocation up onto that campus. So, we need to be able to look at all of the big picture, and I need to see some modeling that goes along with that so that we can figure out what, you know, what we might be able to afford. With the idea that we really need to try to keep the debt service within the Act One index if we possibly can. Because as you all know, we're constrained by Act One, and we want to try to keep each aspect of the budget within Act One if we possibly can. Not that we would overspend, if you will, in one area of the budget and then not have necessary funds in other aspects of our budget. So, the question is, given this repayment schedule here and this parameter, for example, you see in 2028, it jumps up by, you know, maybe a million, 1.185 million in principal repayment. Does this parameter resolution make us stay within that sort of constraint? Or when we look at all the other layering of potential borrowing, could that number be substantially different?
No, that was one of the factors that we took into consideration when we were structuring this deal, just the district's potential future capital needs. So, we did structure this with that in mind.
But I've studied that carefully, and I really would like to have additional discussion with you.
Certainly.
Regarding that. So, the question is, does this parameter resolution limit us to something that's very similar to this? Or does it give us the opportunity to have something different than this by any substantial amount?
It's more or less limited to this general structure. And you can see, there's a little bit of flexibility, but overall, the final bond issue would be very similar to this structure here for this, just this transaction.
Well, we can't get the cart in front of the horse, and we have to certainly be aware of future borrowing that we want to do. That is different than some of the information we had given you, you know, back a little while ago when you did some modeling for us. Because now we're looking at the potential of moving a ninth grade up to the high school, that sort of thing. So.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look. I'm confident that even given the future capital needs for the district, that we would be able to fit it in within the Act One index, given the structure right here.
Okay.
So, moving on to this next page, the sources and uses. The total sources, when you account for all of the bond proceeds and original issue premium, would be under $10 million. The cost of issuance would be the same as the previous deal. Now, the one item I wanted to point out was the largest use, the underwriters discount. We do bid that out as part of the competitive process. So, what I have here under that is just an estimate, but, you know, we wouldn't find that out until the actual day of the sale. But it is tied into how we select the winner. Again, you would receive the funds on March 6th, 2019. And just to note, the underwriters discount for the previous deal was closer to $40,000. So, this is just kind of a high-end estimate. I'm hopeful that it'll be well under that. We're going to flip forward two pages to page six. I mentioned the parameters resolution and the max parameters debt service schedule. Here it is. You can see that has a total principal amount of $10 million. We will not exceed that. Final maturity of March 1, 2034. And then each, for each maturity, the principal amount will be equal to or less than those shown in column two, and the rate will be equal to or less than the rate shown in column three. So, again, these are just a set of boundaries the ultimate pricing would fall within. And then the last page is just the district's existing debt portfolio, as it currently stands. So, at this point, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have or anything else.
Wes, could you just briefly describe why we keep this issue under $10 million? Talk about the benefits of a bank-qualified deal and what kind of differential that results in the interest rate.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. So, by issuing a bank-qualified deal, you would receive better interest rates than a non-bank-qualified deal. And again, that's, bank-qualified is $10 million or less per calendar year. The benefit can be up to a quarter of a percent, so it can really add up. It moves around a little bit, so now it's closer to, you know, 0.15%. But the benefit still is an additional cost saver to the district. And almost even more importantly is with that bank-qualified, the bonds, you would get a five-year call option. Whereas if it's a non-bank-qualified issue, it'd be closer to eight to 10 years. So, you wouldn't be able to call those bonds for, you know, a few years longer for a non-BQ issue.
What's your most recent sale you did and what the numbers come in at?
I did one, I actually did four this week. So, I did one today for Hepborough-Horsham School District. They did pretty well. It actually was a pretty similar structure to the bond deal that you're contemplating. It was received well in the market. We were happy with the results.
Are you able to share what those numbers came in at then?
I want to say they were, so they borrowed $9.8 million. I think, I believe they went out a little longer than your bonds would go out, and their overall all-in yield was around a 3.2%.
And to refresh our memories, the one we just did a couple of months ago was?
That one, yours was, let me check here, wrote it down, like around a 3.05%. But the structure was a little bit different. If you go to, go to page, let's see, page four, the yield on the rates on the, this debt service schedule is around a 3%. We have a bit of conservatism built in.
Does anyone else have any questions for Wes?
So, how long is the parameters resolution valid for, if you will? Let's say we watch this market very closely. We're not satisfied that it's worth it to do the, do the deal here in the next, you know, few weeks. But something takes an interesting turn. Who knows what can happen? We see a significant change in interest rates in, pick a month, I don't know, April, May. Is this parameter still enable us to do something at that juncture? Or do we need a new one at that point in time? So, what's the shelf life of this?
There really is no final expiration. So, that's kind of the beauty of the parameters. By doing it now, it gives, gives the financing team and administration flexibility just, you know, price when they're ready.
The one limitation I believe we talked about, Wes, would be on the bond rating, though, through Moody's. That does have a shelf life. In fact, I had the ratings call yesterday afternoon with Moody's, and that has about a six-month shelf life.
That's correct, yep.
So, we would need to get another ratings from Moody if we do exceed the six-month period. But the whole intent with this is rates have dropped significantly, in particular since late November to now. So, the idea is to strike now. So, unless there's some major spike upwards over the next couple of weeks, the intention is to move forward with this now.
Steve, does our bond rating with Moody's, has it pretty much stayed pretty steady on the six-month rotation? Or is, like, there's something that would make it change in the next six months that?
Well, probably not in the next six months. In fact, the last rating call we had with Moody's was a mere three months ago. And when we had the ratings call yesterday afternoon, even though we don't have the final report yet, the ratings agent, the analyst, pretty much indicated that our rating would stay the same. We're at AA1 right now. So, he indicated that it would pretty much stay the same. Because nothing really has significantly changed financially since we had the last rating call just a few months ago. So, if you move forward another six months, I think it's highly unlikely that anything would change with our rating at that point in time, in another six months. One of the things that was mentioned on the call, though, that could have an impact on our future rating is we talk about other projects and the need potentially for borrowing for other projects. Once those projects are firmed up and finalized, there's no question that could have an impact on the rating. But we made it clear yesterday on the ratings call that we're still in discussion. We just had a preliminary facilities report that was presented to the board. No final decisions have been made based on that study. Those decisions will be made over the next couple of months. We really couldn't present any kind of plan for additional borrowing beyond what we're talking about right now for immediate capital improvements.
Thank you.
But AA1, I just want to restate for the public. Our rating of AA1 does put North Penn School District an elite company in the state of Pennsylvania. We're one of only 18 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania that have a AA1 rating or higher. There's, I think, maybe four or five districts have a AAA rating. We're at AA1, which is just one notch below the AAA rating. So, that's pretty remarkable. And having that higher rating means our default risk is lower, which means we get preferred interest rates when we go to the market. So, having a strong fund balance, having strong financial statements results in lower borrowing costs for the school district and for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. Does anyone else have any questions for Wes or Mr. Scrocky?
Just being new to this, as I am, considering and in the context of longer-term planning and other projects that we're looking to continue to borrow for, does the issuance of this, someone said the expecting next issuance to be in 2020, are we prevented from doing another one later, like in the fall? Do we have to wait till next year?
You don't need to wait if market conditions are correct. The only question I would have, Wes, what does that do to the BQ if we end up incurring additional debt in calendar year 2019? Does that change anything?
It, there's a possibility you would have to do it as taxable debt.
So, one of the reasons why we had structured $10 million in last calendar year was to take advantage of the bank-qualified rate to get the lower rate. And this is also structured in a similar manner. So, the expectation would be that this would be the only borrowing in 2019 in order to, again, take advantage of that bank-qualified rate. I don't think we want to issue taxable debt because now you're going to be seeing a significantly higher interest rate if you would do that.
Okay.
So, kind of the plan that Wes alluded to and Dr. Dietrich was asking a question about, we did have some scenarios that were being modeled some months ago with potential additional borrowing. And it was structured that would be a $10 million borrowing in '18, a $10 million borrowing in '19, and then additional borrowings layered out, I think, for a total of seven years. But again, that's all contingent upon what happens with the end result from the facility study and what happens with a potential high school project.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, if the board's ready to vote, you know, as I said earlier, I recommend this action. I do want to talk to you, Wes, if you could give me a call tomorrow just to watch through a little more in terms of some of the, some of the thoughts and discussions regarding that important meeting we had just a little over a week ago regarding the high school and potentially relocating ninth grade and where that might all fall. So that I have the comfort that there's a pinch point in our present, you know, debt service that I want to make sure we can still navigate. So, I'd like to talk to you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table. If no one else has any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the gifts to the district as listed for January 17th, 2019.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. G. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the Project Lead the Way grant from Lockheed Martin in the amount of $10,000 to benefit the expansion of computer science programming courses at North Penn High School.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of-
Recommend approval of the contracts for the district as listed for January 17th, 2019, copies of which are on file in the business office.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. McCain and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Noticing $20,000, not to exceed $20,000 for additional in-school mental health counselors. Is that just compared to last year? I know through ECP and there've been other issues about an increased need. Is this request related to that, or is this just a typical request at this time of year?
It is related to the mental health and the increased need. I believe, and Ms. Lucas is in the audience, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we do have some money that we can shuffle around, but it is an addendum to the contract specifically to support students at the secondary level. Unfortunately, we've seen an increase in hospitalizations for students at that level.
I know this has been an atypical year, and I want to thank the administration for finding the resources and making sure that this is a priority for our schools and our students and their families especially. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted a clarification on the lease agreement, what, the farm lots?
In the common vernacular, they're known as the movie lots. There's some property that we own in North Penn School District. It stems back to many, many, many years ago. There was a drive-in movie theater up, it's near Orvilla. I think Plains Mennonite Church is there, if you kind of, kind of know where I am on, you know, 63 and Orvilla. Kind of in there, behind a few homes that are right along 63, there's some, some farmland. And we own that. And the way we came to own that was many, many, many years ago. The drive-in movie theater was giving away a very small postage stamp-sized lot in a kind of a drawing, a lottery kind of a basis. You could win a free, your own spot. And people decided that it was more of a nuisance to own that, pay the taxes on it, because they couldn't really do anything with it. So over time, and this took many, many years, they just said, you know, "North Penn, you can have it for a dollar," or whatever it might have been. So we put all those together. We own almost all of them. There's still a few that we don't own. But part of that property is tillable farmland. So we do have a farmer who farms that land and leases that from us on an annual basis.
Interesting. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The things you learn.
Yeah.
All right. Recommend approval of the contracts for the district as listed for January 17th, 2019, copies of which are, oops, I think that's the one I just read. I need to turn the page.
Thank you.
Okay. Recommend a ratification of the submission of the delinquent real estate and interim taxes to Montgomery and Bucks County Tax Claim bureaus as per the attached.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions?
I was wondering if this is indicative this year of the, of the number of delinquents that we have? Is there signs that this is a growing number or not by chance?
Great question. Unfortunately, the number did increase. So these are the properties that remain unpaid through the end of December. Our properties located in Montgomery County and Bucks County. And it was actually an increase of 15% in the total number of dollars that we're turning over this year compared to previous years. So obviously, that has an impact on our budget, because we were planning on receiving this money. So $202,411 is the amount of, the face amount of the bill that's being turned over for delinquent collection through the county. 15% increase.
Mr. Scrocky, what is the average amount that we usually wind up getting when there's delinquent? Don't we, when we collect it, isn't it like 90% eventually?
We actually, for our regular real estate taxes, we budget a 97% collection rate each year. So this year, we are like right on the 97%. In previous years, we were a little bit higher. So as we have those discussions about the budget becoming tighter and tighter, here's an example where our delinquents are actually increasing. Now, eventually, we'll receive this money. It might be in a future fiscal year, not necessarily this fiscal year. But there's, out of that $202,000 total, it's important to note that half that total comes from one property. There was one property that was a lien that was over $100,000 in taxes. It was a commercial property that apparently is in bankruptcy. So I look at the total dollar amount increasing by 15%, but the total number of properties, maybe that's a more important measure, total number of properties only increased by 14 properties, a 3.4% increase. But having that one anomaly with a $100,000 lien, it's very, very unusual. That's what's driving up the fact that we're $202,000 that we're turning over this year, increase, I should say, $202,000 increase compared to previous years.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the approval of the revised finance committee meeting schedule for 2019 as per the attached.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. McCain and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I would like to have some additional discussion with the board about other committee meetings. If we move these finance committee meetings to the evenings as per the attached calendar, we do have then the ability to televise those to the community. It would be my recommendation that we move other committee meetings and have them also on that same evening, so that we can televise those committee meetings also.
So how many committee meetings are we having on a Tuesday night?
Well, we'll have to have that discussion. We have, you know, Safe Schools, ECP, Support Services, and Finance, of course. There are numerous districts that go ahead and have those. They often have them as committee of the whole, or they continue to have the same committee structure. Our finance committee is a committee of the whole. We could go to committee of the whole for the other important committees and have those televised also. We could stick with the current committee assignments to those, and members could come and go as they're available to participate on the same evening for those. But I think if we're going to televise finance committee meetings, I would recommend that we televise as many of the other committee meetings as possible also. But one of the constraints in terms of having them on different nights is our availability of our student workers to be, because we have a lot of events that we cover. But this is a night where we're doing work session now. I think if we wanted to have expanded committee meetings on items that typically we're doing during work session, we could simply have an elongated committee meeting. But the big, the big important thing is it gets it all in front of the community and is televised for the entire community. So it's not a decision we have to make tonight, but one that I would really strongly urge the board to have additional discussion about, perhaps at future committee meetings, to see if we can move those committee meetings also to the same night and have them televised.
I would imagine with all that we have on, you know, on our plate with the Support Services and Finance, that those meetings, if we had them all in one night, it would get to be a very long night.
And that's another...
Some of us might not make it.
Well, yeah, that's an important consideration. So you're balancing that with, you know, trying to get it televised and doing it in one night, and trying to get maximum board, you know, involvement on that night with, you know, as many board members as possible, since they're all would be here for finance already anyway. Balancing with, of course, you can't go till the wee hours to, because people don't have that, you know...
Stamina.
Stamina, yeah. And what time could we start? I think we have to have that discussion. You know, what's a, what's a good time to start? When are board members available? Certainly, if we do it a night where we televise, we make it available to many, many more people. We don't have a lot of people who come to our committee meetings, as you all know. So if we get it televised, we will get it in front of a lot more people than we're able to get it in front of right now. So I think that's something we need to talk about.
I also do think there's some benefit to this from the standpoint of we have a lot of big decisions to make that are being put through some of these committees that not everyone is on. So having committee of the whole for some of these, I think there's a lot of benefit there for the board as well.
Do we have to have all of, we don't have to do the same for all the committees, right? We could prioritize and say, right now, Support Services, for instance, I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there. And Finance would be, too, that I would think would be of interest to the public, in particular interest.
I certainly want to, I'm excited about any opportunity to have as many of the committees in front of the public as possible for transparency and accountability, as Ms. Ott has stated. That's, so whatever we can do, of course, combined with looking forward to our individual committees and my fellow colleagues to find out what that means in terms of a marathon session. I prefer not to have a committee of the whole for every committee, so that there is flexibility for, for us, and also to, to continue with some efficiencies and effectiveness in the decision-making process going forward.
So you said we don't have to make a decision tonight, so we should talk about this at various committees and...
We don't. I would recommend that, that there be discussion at each committee about moving, in a similar fashion, those committee meetings to the night that we formerly were doing work session, and we have committee meetings instead of having a work session night.
So in the meantime, though, we should approve this schedule of...
Yes, it does call for moving one in particular real soon here, so I would go ahead and...
Okay.
I just also want to just go kind of refer back to our last work session meeting at the high school, where we did talk about kind of the, the facility needs coming together with student needs, and that's really kind of bringing together Support Services and ECP. So I do think moving to a model where there is more transparency, more openness, where we are getting community input, and then also where we're all on the same page, I do think by, I think it is going to be very hard to make everything a committee of the whole, like how much, and that is spreading ourselves very thin. But being able to bring together those ideas and making sure that the committees are flowing so that we do, that we're coming up with a more cohesive, comprehensive plan, I think is something that we need to also consider.
Thank you.
Kurt, just a question. You could also televise, but not make every committee committee of the whole.
Correct. You could have members going in, I mean, we could be seated around here, but only certain members have voting privileges in terms of moving something out of committee. You could have members moving back and forth between being in the audience or being, having a seat up here. Whatever the pleasure of the board is, they don't have to all be committee of the whole in order to be televised. We could televise a three-person or a four-person committee, and as I said earlier, and there've been times at committee meetings when the next one's about to start, a board member arrives. Sometimes you sit in the audience, sometimes sit right up here at the table. I mean, we've done it all kinds of ways, so we make the rules about that. So it's the pleasure of the board and the administration to figure that out.
Great. Okay. So do I, we have a motion, right? Do we have any more questions? All in favor then?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the acceptance of the propane fueling station grant through the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Alternative Fuel Initiative Grant Program in the amount of $155,302, and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Driving PA Forward Grant for 10 propane school buses in the amount of $459,400.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ott and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
I'd just like to thank the administration, the staff. From what I've read, this is not, I think this is the largest grant win, correct? This is very competitive. So really, just making this great benefit for the environment, for our taxpayers, especially for our students. This is excellent. Thank you very much for leading.
Yes, congratulations on it. It's a big deal.
Thank you. Okay. So are we all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Right, all in favor? Good. Motion carries.
All right. We recommend approval of the attached resolution authorizing the 2019-2020 proposed preliminary budget display and advertising.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of student travel as listed.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski and seconded by Ms. Ott. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of alternative placements as per those listed, and copies are on file in the office of Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the settlement agreement for student 0117194.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion.
Okay.
Thought you said motion.
She said second.
Oh.
But there wasn't a first. Okay, so motion by Mrs. Burkowski and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of personnel items.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski and seconded by Mrs. G. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the amended 2019-2020 North Penn School District school calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, one comment. I really like the way this is laid out. So much better than it has been in the past. A lot easier to read, find it where I...
Oh, it is, yeah.
I did have one question, but I have to find it. Let's see. I was looking for January the holiday, okay, I'm just, I'm looking at how it's laid out, and it's not normally how it's laid out, which is, is January 20th, is it a no, when it says no schools, is the district closed on Martin Luther King Day?
No.
Or is just school closed on Martin Luther?
School is closed, so the 12-month employees work that day.
Is that, has that been typical? Is that what we normally do? We don't normally close as a district?
Correct. We have the days that were closed and that impact 12-month employees are negotiated in the support union contract, so they delineate which days would be holidays.
Within the contract.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Mr. Scrocky?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of quick updates before I provide the treasures report for the month of December. First off, the 2019-20 preliminary budget will be available for public inspection next week. We're slated to present that to the finance committee on February 4th, and the preliminary budget is scheduled for adoption on February 12th. Quick update on the real estate tax rebate program. So far today, we've had 301 applications, and we've issued $24,139 in rebates. And just a little teaser, in a couple of months, we'll be able to provide some big news regarding the rebate program. Actually, it's a statewide recognition of our rebate program. So unfortunately, I can't announce the details quite yet, but in March, I'll be able to announce those details. In terms of the treasures report, the report is for the month of December 2018. Cash receipts for the month totaled $8.8 million, and cash dispersments totaled $20 million. So we had a $11.3 million cash outflow for the month of December, which is really typical for this time of year. We have negative cash flow from really December through June, because we don't collect the majority of our real estate taxes right now. Our cash balance through the end of December was $167.8 million, and that's about a $7.3 million increase over the same period last year. So I recommend that we approve the treasures report for December 2018.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions for Mr. Scrocky? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to budget transfers. I recommend that we approve the budget transfers for the period of November 19th through December 31st, 2018, in the aggregate amount of $259,635.99.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next up is financial reports for the month. They are included for informational purposes only, and I did provide, we did not have a December finance committee meeting, but I did provide a summary of each report in board docs, so that's available, publicly accessible, and those reports were through the month of November. So moving on to sanction and approval of invoices for the month of December, I recommend ratification of dispersments for the month of December in the amount of $23,336,457.17.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Skrocky.
Thank you.
Other business. Um, did you want to, all right, yeah, the PSBA Legislative Liaison. We need to appoint a board member to serve as the PSBA Legislative Liaison, and I believe, Mr. McBain, you expressed some interest in doing so?
I nominate Mr. McBain.
I'll second that one.
Okay, nomination made by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Are there any other nominations? No? Okay. All in favor of sending Mr. McBain as our liaison?
Aye.
I may, it's all of them.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you. Any additional topics that anyone would like to discuss?
Just a quick follow-up, the comment at the very beginning of the meeting about problems with online testing, is that something that's kind of just an isolated incident? Is something we've seen happening on a more wide scale?
Yeah, I actually plan on speaking with Mrs. Blanchard after this, but as of, we are now four days in, I've, small things with people bringing their devices from home instead of the district device, I did not receive one. And there's a survey form for teachers to submit complaints, we didn't get one today.
Okay.
But I ran some forensics while we're sitting here, and I'm going to talk to Mrs. Blanchard. I can report back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
There's no reason to expect that that should cause a, like a technical problem would cause a permanent issue for a grade on an assessment, correct?
There isn't on the surface, so I need to get some more detail. Linkit is able to provide for us, that's the online testing platform, they're able to provide for us how long students spend on each question, so I have a bunch of data here to take a look at. I'll get back to you.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you. Any other topics anyone would like to discuss? Then we have the second audience of citizens.
Thank you. And this is a continuation and a reformulation of what I talked about the buses. You have 140 buses. If you were to replace 20 every other year, it would take you about 14 years to replace this fleet. Has anybody got an idea how much that bus costs, one bus? Now, what you have here is you have an accumulation of all different kinds of buses. It sounds like the airline model that they used to have about 30 years ago. We got McDonnell Douglas, we got Boeing here, we got, we got a couple of these other planes over here, Lockheed Martin. You can't operate like that, and that's a doomed airline. You need commonality in the cockpit, you need all one kind, you need a Dreamliner for the buses. I suggest you buy Bluebird. Get all the same kind of buses so that the parts would all be interchangeable, the mechanics would be well-versed on it. If you go by price all the time, you're going to have a rolling pile of junk that nobody really understands. What you have to do is, like the rotary wing in the Army, possibly the Marines, they're going for a new helicopter now, they're going to get rid of the Black Hawk, they have a 10-year outlook on what they're going to replace, and it takes 20 years to finally get what they need in place. You have the same problem. You move 14 million miles of these buses, and nobody ever brought to me statistics, "Oh, yeah, those Thomases, they break down all the time." Yeah, all the, all the radiators went down. Nobody ever came to me and said, "This is a record of what the, of the mechanics have to do. This is the time that they spend on it. This is what has to be done." Six people, Mr. Skrocky, six mechanics, am I right?
You're correct.
Okay, six, oh, I'm glad I got that right. Okay, now, six guys are supposed to be working on this junk. I don't know how many times they have to go back to some buses. I saw a bus 39 going by while I was, that thing I can't even believe, but what is, it was a Bluebird. I understand why the paint is all faded. It's been out on the highway so long, the UV rays have turned it orange. So what I'm telling you is, when you're going to buy things, we got to put what's important, logistical support and moving all these students around for your full-day kindergarten and all these other things, and moving everything around, what you have to do is have a, have a comprehensive plan that's sustainable, that you're going to replace all these buses in 14 years. You're talking about nonsense here, nonsense. You need to get and move and good logistical support. That's what they have in the Army, that's what they have in the military. The military, they do have to move a lot of people, and if they had a resort to marching around, it would probably be going back to World War I, and I don't think that would be how, the way we're going to do this. You need a modern bus fleet with a comprehensive plan to replace every single unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment this evening?
Can I just, real quick, for, Mr. Skrocky, refresh my memory, the goal is to get the fleet's average age to 10 years or below, correct?
That's correct.
So how many years would it take us at 10 years of bus to get to that goal?
Well, right now, our average age is about 12.7 years. So our plan is actually purchase 10 new buses per year. Now, with the grant funding that we're able to receive, we can actually accelerate that. So we're hopeful that we receive the 10-bus grant this year for propane buses. And the way the rules of the grant work is that we have to actually receive those buses and put 10 buses out of commission. That part won't be a problem. Once that, yeah, we have a line of more than 10, but once we take those 10 out of commission, we can then apply for the next round of grant funding. So it's first come, first served for the Driving PA Forward Grant. So we're basically going to receive the buses at a 50% discount with the grant funds. So our plan is to get a bid out as fast as we can. In fact, we have a bid advertisement that's out there right now for 10 new buses, receive the buses, take 10 buses out of commission, and start the grant process all over again for the next 10, and the next 10, and the next 10. So if the money is still available, we actually think we might be able to buy 40 buses between this fiscal year and next fiscal year, if the grant money is available. So it would be 40 new buses out of 140.